It's called order. That's what stands for flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Corinne, can you read the statement certification on the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to sunshine law.
We're gonna have our reorganization. We put it off last month. We thought we'd do it in person, but that doesn't look like it's gonna happen. So tonight, we're gonna do a reorganization. We're gonna start with our board attorney. And I nominate Tom Sabito for our planning board attorney. Is there any other nominations? Is there any more nominations for board attorney? If not, Corinne, could you call the roll?
Um, yes. Chairman Venero.
Yes.
Mayor Melham. Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Conti. He said yes. Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Graziano.
I think he's muted.
He's probably muted. All right, Ms. Guam.
Yes.
He's signaling yes.
Ms. Inogorado. Mr. Guyans.
Yes.
Okay.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to nominate Ray Venero as chairman.
Is there any other nomination for chairman? If there's no more nominations for chairman, could you please call a roll?
Right, I think we might be able to just do motion and second for this if Rose could confirm.
That's usually the vote, huh?
If you, yeah. Okay. Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Graziano. All right, not here yet. Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mr. Guyans.
Yes.
Okay.
Next up is vice chairman.
I was muted, sorry, Corinne. I was, I think I was muted.
That's okay.
Next up is vice chairman, and I'd like to nominate Andrew Conti for vice chairman. Is there any other nominations? If there's no more nominations, please call a roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe. Ms. Guam.
Yes.
And Mr. Guyans.
Yes.
Okay.
Next up, we have secretary, and I'd like to nominate Tom Bowe for secretary. Is there any other nominations for secretary? If there's no more nominations, please call a roll for Tom Bowe for secretary.
Okay, Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
I'm not sure if Mr. Graziano is, okay, thanks. Ms. Guam.
Yes.
And Mr. Guyans.
Yes.
Okay.
Next up, we have board engineer. I'd like to nominate Tom Harris as board engineer. Is there any other nominations?
I'll second that.
Second it, okay. Please call a roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Ms. Inogorado.
Yes.
And Mr. Guyans.
Yes.
Next up, we have board secretary, and I would like to nominate Corinne DeAngelo. Is there any other nominations for board secretary? There's no more nominations, I'd like to call a roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Ms. Inogorado.
Yes.
And Mr. Guyans.
Yes.
Next, we have board photographer, and I'd like to nominate Michelle Quick. Is there any other nominations for board photographer? If not, please call a roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Ms. Inogorado.
Yes.
Mr. Guyans.
Yes.
Thank you.
Last but not least, our zoning officer. I'd like to nominate Frankie Lorenzo. Any other nominations?
Ray, Ray.
We don't have to go for you?
No, 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 not at all.
All right. Very good. Next up, I guess Corinne, could you just call a roll?
Yes. Mr. Venero.
Here.
Mayor Melham. Mr. Zangary.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Bowe.
Here.
Mr. Corbo. Mr. Graziano. Ms. Guam.
Here.
Ms. Rico. Ms. Inogorado.
Here.
Mr. Guyans.
Here.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Haritz.
Here.
And Ms. Sabito.
Next up, we have a kind of motion to the approval of the minutes of the July 9th, 2020.
Motion. Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Inogorado.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
And Mr. Guyans.
Under old business, we have resolutions to be memorialized, and there's three of them. We're gonna start with PB 2904, 30 Washington Avenue, block 8502, blocks 3, 4, 4.01, and 4.02. Approval to construct a four-story mixed-use building, the first floor retail of 15 units. Please call a roll.
I'm only pulling people who originally voted, so Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
And Mr. Guyans.
Yes.
Next up, we have PB 2003, 49 Rocco Street, block 1502, block 25. Approval to subdivide the currently vacant lot into two separate lots, and thereafter, construct two family dwellings in each of the newly created lots. Please call a roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Inogorado.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Guyans.
Yes.
Next up is PB 2006, 450 and 452 Washington Avenue, block 8905, block 7 and 8. Approval to demo existing structures and construct a four-story mixed-use building, the first floor retail of 14 units. Please call a roll.
Mr. Venero.
Right.
Yes.
Sorry, there's some, just minor edits that I'm going to make to that. Additions that I got comments for from Mr. Haritz, and I'd like to add them in.
Sure. Want to do it now, read them in, or you want to?
Adjourn it.
Um, I think we should just, I should put it in writing, and then we'll distribute, and then just pass the resolution.
Very good. So we'll postpone it to our next remedial meeting. Right, Corinne?
The next meeting, yes.
Okay. Next is new business. We have PB 2011. Planning board to review resolution and submit recommendations to the mayor council. Townshipwide area in need of redevelopment designation. Mr. Haritz here to present the case, and redevelopment attorney, Mr. Donatella, will answer any questions or concerns.
Yes, I think Dean's just gonna make an introduction, and then I'll go into the report.
Very good.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Can, can, Corinne, can you hear me okay? Thank you. For the record, this is Dean Donatella. I'm special redevelopment council for the township of Belleville. What's before you in this particular matter is a form of resolution which, which adopted by council would designate the entire town of Belleville, an area in need of rehabilitation. There is a statute which sets forth certain criteria which must be satisfied before a property or the town can be designated an area in need of rehabilitation. And, uh, council has received preliminary feedback from Mr. Haritz on his, on his, what he's about to present to the, to the planning board. And the job of the board tonight is to hear Mr. Haritz's testimony. I think you've received his report, and then report back to the council if you have any comments or revisions to the form of resolution which the council would adopt, designating the town an area in need of rehabilitation. So if there's no questions for me, I'll just ask Tom to present his report to the board.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and hopefully you all had a chance to go through. It's a very short report, two pages, dated July 20th, 2020. And it's, uh, the study was done to, to declare the whole, the entire township as an area in need of rehabilitation. So if you go down the report, it, first, the first thing we do is give a little history. We outline the boundaries of the, of the township, gives the population, and it states that the housing stock is basically single-family homes, multifamily homes, apartment buildings, townhouses, and are all, all that, all of that's located within the study area, which is the entire township of Belleville. Now, now, there's, there's two criteria that we meet that would make this an area of, an area in need of rehabilitation. The first one is that more than the head, more than half of the housing stock of Belleville is at least 50 years old. And the second is that a majority of the water and sewer infrastructure serving the properties within Belleville is at least 50 years old and in need of repair or substantial maintenance. Now regarding the housing stock, I, uh, just, in order to back that, back up that more than 50% is over 50 years old, when I was doing a study for our, for the township's lead service line replacement, I had the, the assessor run off all his records, and his records include the dates that the, the dwelling, whether it's a commercial or residential, that when, when the building was construct, built. And if you go through that list, you'll discover that over 75% of the housing stock within the, within Belleville is over 50 years old. So it's documented in the assessor's records. The other, the other criteria is about the infrastructure, and there's, there's no question that the infrastruc, if the housing stock is over 50 years old, there's no question that the water and the sewer over, within the township is over 50 years, the majority of it's over 50 years old. You just have to look at the number of water breaks we get and sewer repairs that the DPW's making to back that up. So, uh, so based on those conditions, and, uh, I'm declaring the township as an area in need of rehabilitation. And those two criteria again are that more than half of the housing stock of Belleville is at least 50 years old, and the majority of the water and sewer infrastructure serving the properties within Belleville is at least 50 years old and in need of repair and substantial maintenance. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, but there's no question that, when you look at the entire township as a whole, that it meets the criteria, at least two of the criteria to, to, to deem the township an area, an area in need of rehabilitation.
Mr. Haritz, I guess there's no argument, the two facts you presented, that the housing stock and infrastructure is old, but I just have a question for Mr. Donatella. Dean, first, what is the implication? If we agree to this or recommend to designate the town an area why in need of rehabilitation, what does this, what does this do?
That, that's a great, that's a great question, Chairman. So this is, this is one piece of a, a, a program of rehabilitation that the tech council is considering. It's the designation of properties or the town, an area in need of rehabilitation. And the second piece of that is a short-term tax abatement, which is action that was already taken by the council. Really, that particular action doesn't, doesn't really involve, under the law, the planning board. And the, the way that short-term tax exemption works is that any property that is designated an area in need of rehabilitation would be eligible for the tax, the short-term tax abatement, the five-year tax abatement that's within that ordinance that has already been adopted by the town. So to answer your question directly, Mr. Chairman, the implications of, of declaring the entire municipality an area, an area of rehabilitation would mean that all the properties within the municipality would be eligible for the different tax abatement programs, I'll call them, within the town's short-term tax abatement program.
And that would apply to new construction also?
I can go through. So that, those are the two larger pieces. So there's basically three, under, under the town's short-term tax exemption program, there's basically three categories of properties that would be eligible. And again, in order to be eligible, they would have to be designated an area in need of rehabilitation. So the first, I'll call it, program of rehabilitation is for improvements or renovations to single and two-family residences. They, those houses that are single and two families that are 20, 20 years or older are eligible for a five-year tax abatement for any improvements up to $20,000. So if you do, so if a property owner owns an existing home, does $20,000, it's, it's greater than 20 years old, does up to $20,000 of improvements to that existing single or two-family home, the additional assessment that would have otherwise applied, applied to that, that increased construction would be exempt for five years.
And that, I guess, would spur people improving their houses without the fear of an increased tax bill for the next five years, right? That's what that?
Correct. That's to motivate existing homeowners, Chairman, to, to, you know, to improve their homes and have the incentive to, have a little bit of incentive to, to do, to do that, to do that work.
Well, that sounds like a good idea.
So that's the first of three. The second, I'll call it, program of rehabilitation is for renovations to, renovations to multifamily, which is three or more family residential projects, renovations to industrial or commercial structures. And in that case, it would be, the abatement is if the resultant assessment would increase the taxes greater, oh, I'm sorry, less than $50,000, then 30% of those improvements would be exempt from taxation for five years. So that would be if the, for renovations that would result in less than $50,000 increase in taxes, 30% of those, those improvements would be exempt from taxation. Where the improvements for, again, multifamily, commercial and industrial properties would be greater than, the taxes would result in greater than 50, increase in $50,000 taxation, that, that increased assessment would be entirely exempt for, for five, for five years.
Okay.
And, and the motivation there is, is the same, Chairman. It's to motivate existing property owners, multifamily, commercial, industrial, to renovate their properties with the incentive of, of having portion of that assessment abated.
Okay.
That's the second program of three. The last one is new construction of multifamily, uh, commercial and industrial structures. Now that's slightly different there. It's called kind of a stepped-up or staged program. The, the entire pro, the entire project would be exempt from taxation for five years. In the first year, 100% of the, of the project is, is exempt. In the second year, 20% of the, of the assessment must be paid. In the third year, 40%. A fourth year, 60%. Last year, 80%. And then, and then after that, it's a full, full taxation. And that is really just to spur, you know, that's just to spur new construction, incentivize development of, you know, delinquent properties that can be, you know, built anew. And so those are the three, I'll call them buckets of types of properties within the town that if a town-wide designation of an area in need of rehabilitation was made, then those different categories and classes of properties would be eligible for the, for the abatements, which I just described.
Dean, can you repeat yourself on number three? You're telling me that in new construction, if somebody were to construct a 20-unit building, the first year, 100% of their tax would be free?
Correct.
And then 80? It seems a little aggressive.
That's, it's?
Is there a way for us to suggest a different, uh, scale on that?
That's better than any of the deals we've ever done with any of the developers. It can keep him, it's a good point, Mr. Conti, that, those are statutory, those are statutory percentage, percentages. That's right out of the, that's right out of the law, playbook.
Yeah, I mean, I like the first two very, very good. And the third one, I mean, if we just have these people coming with these projects and doing it on a case-by-case basis, instead of just painting a broad stroke across the whole town. I mean, I don't know how other members feel, but the first two, to me, are home runs. I think it's great for the town. The third one, I'm not so sure about. I mean, the first year, zero tax. Like I said, like Mr. Conti said, that's, that's pretty aggressive.
What is also the, the implication of areas in need of redevelopment? How would that play into it?
So that's, so, Mr. Conti, that's, you have two good questions, and, and I should clarify, the first two programs, I'll say they're kind of as, they'll, they're as of right, an applicant submits an application, and they're going, they're going, they're going to be, it'll be approved by Mr. Esposito. It's more ministerial. The, the second, the third program, I'm sorry, the one you, you, the chairman and Mr. Conti are asking about, are, are, they're required to go through to the council for approval, so there'd be a resolution of approval of council, and there'd also be a financial agreement required. And I think some of the motivation is that you kind of want to have a, want to have a, you want to incentivize development within the municipality, and I think for purposes of governance, you want to kind of, don't want to play preference to property owners. So I think the incentive or the, the, the strategy when the legislature adopted this five-year tax abatement program was that it would, would be basically an incentive for everyone, would, would be a, a pretty standard criteria for the granting of it, of the bait, of abatement. But I want to say for the five-year program, that does require approval of the council by resolution, and it does require a financial agreement. And, Mr. Conti, to your second question about how does an area of redevelopment play into this, and this could be another reason why you would want to go do a program like this, because if someone were to come in and say, I want to get a, I want to have the, my property deemed an area in need of redevelopment, as you, as you articulated, the difference is, is under the, an area in need of redevelopment designation, they could seek a 30-year tax abatement, which you've, which you've seen before in different contexts. So this gives the, the town a little bit of a sword to say, we're not, we're not, you know, incentivized, or we're not interested in giving you an area in need of redevelopment designation, or a long-term, or the 30-year tax abatement, but we do have for you this five-year program, which, you know, should incentivize you enough developer to do your project.
The other part of that, what you, what you added is, it still has to be approved by the council, so it still isn't spread so fairly if, if, if the council decides for some reason it doesn't want to approve somebody.
Just? Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, it still needs to be approved by someone, no longer by us, but yet by a political body. So I don't know what the advantage to that is. If some developer comes in and for some reason he's not in the good graces, he could be what? Denied on what, on what basis?
It's, it's usually that the, I'll call it a butt-for test, Mr. Conti, it's, you know, without that, without the abatement, the project wouldn't go forward with the policy being that, well, you know, if, if we didn't grant this program, the project wouldn't move forward, and the, and the, and the property wouldn't be developed, you know, to the benefit of the town. So you have to, you have to kind of buy into the fact that, you know, redevelopment is good for the town, and, you know, it spurs other development, it spurs ratables for the, for the municipality. You know, granted, it's a, it may be a five-year abatement for one particular property, but it's going to impact existing properties in the area because it's new construction and so on. So you have to kind of, that would be a program that I think the council is, is looking to, to advance.
Has anybody done any type of study as to how it would actually impact taxes at the rate that we're reconstructing now, which seems to be at a pretty good rate?
I, I'm not aware of a stu, of a study, Mr. Conti.
In other words, we're, we're redeveloping a building at a, on a, a fairly aggressive rate now, and we're collecting some taxes. So like Ray says, I, I kind of like one or two. I'm not too crazy about three, because I think it just opens, I mean, what would be the effect of a 30-year deal as opposed to a five-year deal? You may do better in a five-year deal than, I don't know who's negotiating the 30-year deals or what they really look like, although I have some information on that. We don't really know how the town nets out better in a five-year deal or a 30-year deal. You could have some projects where you could do better with this, and I, I don't know, I don't know how anything, any, uh, anything's applied to it. Seems like you say it's just a blanket thing. It's a, you know, 180, 60, and, I don't know. I don't, I don't like the third leg of it, to be, to be honest with you.
Mr. Donatella, has any other towns adopted a policy like this?
Yes, there is the, yes, some of the, I did, I did do a little bit of a kind of informal survey. Some, so, so Boardent Town in South, South Jersey, South Orange Village, Bloomfield, Bayonne, Highland Park, and your neighbor Newark and Jersey City all have five-year abatement programs.
When did all fill adopt this? Do you know, is it something recent, or?
I, I don't know that. I can find out for you, Chairman. I think it's, I think it's been, I think it's been in, in effect for, you know, since the, since 2000s.
Also, you know, this is not on us, but on the state. I mean, you're given a homeowner, up to what, how, what, up to what amount could the homeowner make improvements? It's unlimited?
20,000.
Well, the, the amount that's exempt would be up to 20,000, but if they make $100,000 of improvements, right, they, then just the first 20 would be exempt.
Right, so they're, they're kind of being shorted. The other guy can sell a $3 million building and get, and get a huge break, and yet the homeowner who were, this is what it should be designed towards, people fixing up their places, 20,000 will buy you a roof in the driveway. That's nothing.
That's, that is, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to kind of always, the, the, this is the, the, this, these are the programs that are available under the short-term tax exemption law, and maybe? law, and you can kind of pick and choose them, but if you do choose one like the, the new construction, which has the staged program, that's what the law provides. The, it's interesting, Mr. Conti, because you, if you look at the law, I didn't go into the history, you know, into the, the history of the legislation, but the numbers are relatively small. They're fif, I mean, twenty thousand is the max. I mean, they, they have, they have numbers like, I forget what they are, I think it's the increments, it's either five, ten, or twenty thousand dollars, you know, this could, this, this ordinance, now keep in mind, this ordinance is already in place that I'm talking about, but the, the impact, and I want to repeat, I'm going to repeat myself a little bit, the impact of the, the, of this designated, townwide designation would be to implicate the, the existing ordinance, which is already in place, on, on all the properties within town. There's only one property in town that's been designated near in need of rehabilitation. I don't know whether you recall what came before you, that's the, that correct, Main Street.
Right, right.
And so that, that prop, prop, project is eligible for this program, and it's a good example of, it's a good example of, you know, how, how it would work, because bridge development would not have moved forward with that project, like it or not, I mean, that's, I guess, that would not have moved forward with that project unless they were to get an abatement.
Dean, was, was, was that project also, the same rates would apply at a hundred percent, eighty percent, the same?
Yes. And that's in, that's in, that's in effect now, because that's there, that property's been designated, and the, and the, and the short-term abatement ordinance has been adopted. So to, to add additional properties for the entire town, that's where you, that's where, you know, the incentive is, is greater and, and as a broader brush. I think that's what the, I think that's what the law is intended to do, is kind of look at larger areas of the town, and, you know, promote development.
And you said this was already passed by the council?
So there's two pieces again, Chairman, and the first one is the ordinance, which, the ordinance which makes properties that are designated near in need of rehabilitation eligible for the tax abatement. That ordinance has already been adopted. The only property that has been designated near in need of rehabilitation within the township is the, is the Main Street site bridge development. So, so again, the, to get back to your original question, the implication of, of the town adopting an area in need of rehabilitation for the entire town would be that all properties within town, in the classifications under the ordinance, would be eligible for those programs.
Now, you also said there's a financial agreement. Could the town request something, a payment in the first year, or, or no?
It's got to be, the ordinance is, tracks the language in the statute, it would be the, it would be the five years, the, the zero, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty calculation.
Wow. I'd like to hear from other members, what, what they feel. Mr. Banda, maybe, could you give some input?
I like the program. I, I, I don't even mind the, the one-year abated taxes for the commercial buildings, because usually with those, we, I mean, they, I know from the banking side, you know, they have to find tenants, and they're sitting there vacant with nothing in there for a few months, and that gives them a little extra comfort in, in the ability to know that they're not going to be hit with a hundred percent of the load of the bills and no income. So that is a benefit for the developers, which means that makes them more interested in developing in our areas. Same goes for, for, you know, houses, i- i- it makes everybody want to add a little bit, even, even on the new development side, you know, and, and it's better for us. If we have seventy-five-year-old stock in the town, that puts a lot of weight on our tax base, meaning we have to raise our tax rate in order to get the taxes that we need to run the township, which, you know, makes people not want to put new houses in the town. So we have to find a way to get that tax rate down. So doing things like this, I, I think it helps us get to that medium, it helps us get there, a place where we have to go. Otherwise, we will continue to deteriorate, and we'll continue to, to lose value all the way across the town. And I don't know, I don't want my house to do that, I want my investments to do that, and I don't know if anybody else is going to want to do that. So I like it. I think for the larger developments too, I, I think the council should have a say. Because they're, they're, they're different than residential. But that's all I got.
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody on his board is pro-development, we want to see development. Just one of my concerns is, you know, recently, we, we approved a bunch of projects, some larger scale ones, and I'm just wondering if the floodgates are going to open, and, you know, I don't want to, too much development, you know, too much, you know, see that we have too much at one time, and don't know what the impact on our traffic and school systems are. That's just one of my concerns.
Well, I think that's, I think that's also something, one of the reasons why we put, why we made sure that it was smaller units, majority smaller units, so that we can measure that as we come out of the gate. I mean, I know a lot of surrounding towns put on a lot of capacity, and it hasn't negatively impacted them at all. Certain towns has positively impacted them. So I think as we go, we're going to measure this. We've approved stuff, but nothing's done yet, nothing's been built. So over the next two years, we'll keep paying attention, and, and, and we should have further discussions as, as we move. Again, the market's going to change too. I mean, with everything that's happening with COVID, and, and the way that it's had an, had an impact on, on the overall way the economy works, I mean, you're not going to see big back stores ever again, you might not see strip malls ever again. The, the, the wait now for, for the investors are just going towards warehousing and apartments, you know, those are the safest investments for these guys. So that's where you're going to see a lot of money moving into, and it's, it's where we can gain a lot of tax base, hopefully, in the, in the valley where we zone for it, and on our avenues, which we specifically made a point, you know, and, and hopefully, the way that we did it, it won't have an effect on our schools. You know, if, if anything, it'll help bring money in to help fund new programs in our schools and, and within the municipality, that we can't really afford now, or that are suffering because we don't have the funding for it. So again, that's, that's my take on it.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion. Any other board members want to jump in here and see what their feelings are?
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt real quickly, when we're completed with this, I think we missed the reorganization of, of two of our members, Mr. Graziano and Ms. Inagorato.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, not a big deal, I, I can, when you're completed with your comments, I just want to swear them in before we vote on anything.
Okay.
Okay?
Before we vote, we'll do it. Very good.
Yeah, so you can finish up your comments, and then I could do that with them, and then we could just continue.
Very good.
All right?
All right. Um, yeah, again, does any other members have, like, a way in and see what their feelings are?
I'm going to chime in again. I, I agree with Mr. Venero. I, I think we're developing at a pretty good pace, as it is. I hope that the council negotiates good thirty-year deals. We have nothing before us to show whether a five-year deal is better or worse than the thirty-year deals that they negotiate, so we're blindly going to approve something without really knowing what the impact is on the actual tax collected. I know our taxes have gone up, as most towns have. I agree, I think that development should happen in a controlled manner. You open up some floodgate, you may wind up with a lot of section eight, low-income apartment buildings, built as high as we could build them, because we've approved that, go four, five, six floors. I think that you ought to be a little careful, we're getting a little too aggressive. And personally, I like something zoned towards the current homeowner, who wants to improve his home, but he only gets a break up to twenty grand. The other guy comes in with twenty million, and he gets a full-blown break. So I'm really not in favor of it personally, because I don't like the way it's designed, and that's of no fault of anybody here, but that's the way I understand the state designed it. I just think that you ought to proceed cautiously. God's not making any more land, the developers are going to come here one way or another. If you want to rebuild this town, it's not going to happen in the next two, three years, and you'd be sorry if it does, because a lot of projects could start, could fail, could be left half-finished. There's a lot of things that could go wrong. So I, I'm personally not in favor of it, no.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may just add two points. One, I, I just wanted to add that the ordinance that's, again, already in place, does have a sunset provision for fifteen years. So that, that program, again, which is already in place, with sunset in fifteen years. The second, the second thing, I just wanted to kind of read, we, I was asked, we, we were discussing what the implications are. I think the scope of the, of this board's review is really, I need to go back to Mr. Harris's analysis. The scope of the planning board's review is really not to, to delve into the policy decisions that were made by council relative to the short-term. I know it's a concern, but I think the focus of the planning board is really to, is to consider Mr. Harris's testimony, and to see whether his testimony supports the, supports the designation of an area, a townwide area in need of rehabilitation.
I, I think that those, those, those regulations are rather loose. I don't know how many towns wouldn't qualify under infrastructure and housing being older than fifty years. I mean, that's every town in, in, in the state, at least, unless there's some new ones that just opened up. So I think that, that's very loosely worded to apply to almost everywhere. So explain to me, how does that help our infrastructure in the next five years if we give everybody tax breaks?
Well, well, and I'll defer to, I'll also, I'll take, I'll take a shot at that, and I think the, when you, when you, you know, along with development goes infrastructure improvements such as adjacent road, or adjacent roadways, off-site contributions, improvements and upgrades to, you know, I know, for example, on the, the Belmont, the Belmont Silver Lake Project, there's going to be an investigation of the sewer lines along that, along that right-of-way. So I, I think, I think you, you need to believe that, I think the, I think the, the goal is to have with development, you have infrastructure improvements which, which are, you know, impacted by that development, which ultimately would, would benefit the town.
Yeah, I noticed we gave the property at Hoffman La Roche, a Wawa, and a storage facility, and they patched the sidewalk along Franklin Avenue. They patched it, they didn't replace it, they patched it. You know, what, what sounds like a laudable goal doesn't seem to come to fruition. When the developers are done, they get what they can, and they do as little as they can. That's what I've noticed in most towns.
Well, Mr. Conti, that's, I mean, that's a good point, I just, I mean, that would be something, that could be a condition that the planning board could impose on its approvals. That is within your jurisdiction to impose. I, I wasn't involved in those proceedings, but that's something that, you know, could, could be handled in the redevelopment process, which you should know is, is, is a different track, but in, there's a planning board piece to it, which, where you could capture those kind of off-site improvements.
Mr. Donatello, I guess the, the council is looking for a recommendation. Could we recommend that, or this plan has to be accepted in, in the three steps that?
No, you, you can make, you can make your recommendation on the, on the, on the, the language in the resolution, and, and with, with a focus on Mr. Harris's, you know, testimony as to why the town should be declared an area in need of redevelopment, redevelopment. I, I think probably a more, a more, I don't want to say productive, but given that the, the abatement program has already been adopted by the council, which is a policy decision for the governing body, it might be more within the realm of the, of the, the planning board to, to advise which areas of the, maybe if it's not, if it's not going, if, if, if the town believe, if the planning board believes that a town-wide designation is not appropriate, then I think a response for the planning board might be, well, these areas should be considered areas in need of rehabilitation, not the whole town, keeping in mind that the, the abatement program, while implicated, is already, it's already, it's already a program adopted by the town. So for example, if, and I'm just going to throw an out example, you, you as the board know better, if it were the area along, you know, Washington Avenue, or a certain stretch of Washington Avenue, a certain residential district, the Gardens, for example, if there's different areas, maybe that include less potential for new construction, which it sounds like the board doesn't like, then, then, then the council can look at which areas of town may be designated, as opposed to an air, a townwide designation. But the recommendation, Mr. Chairman, as to the, the last program, that's a program that's already been adopted by, by the, by the, by the town. So I think that might be a, that might be a way for the board to communicate to the governing body.
Mr. Donatello, what has been, you keep referring to the, the abatement program that the town has adopted. What specific policy is that?
That's the, Mr. Conti, that's what I described earlier, that's the, the single and two-family homes, up to twenty thousand dollars of improvements would be exempted for five years. The improvements to, to existing industrial, multifamily, and commercial properties, depending on the tax implications, it's either a thirty percent exemption or a one-hundred percent.
So the three criteria you explained has already been adopted?
That piece of it, but again, that does not apply to properties that have not been designated in area.
Got you. So, so those three criteria only apply to somebody who makes an application, and we grant them that, like we did Main Street?
So those three criteria would only apply to properties that have been designated in area in need of rehabilitation. So, so Main Street was independently declared in area in need of rehabilitation. So, I mean, you could do it on a property-by-property basis, you could just have one property, and then you go down next property, if you find another property where you feel a five-year abatement program, you can appropriate, you can designate that area in need, a property in area in need of rehab, and then that would implicate the ordinance, again, that's already been in place.
There's no, there's no program we could implement that would eliminate number three, but include number one and two?
No, no, that isn't within, with all due respect, that's not within the jurisdiction of the planning board. That's a policy decision that was made by the governing body. The planning board's role in this is to figure out which, one, what areas are eligible to be designated in area in need of rehabilitation.
So, so this, 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 these three criteria were developed by the state of New Jersey or the township of Belleville?
Well, the same, they're both, because the, the statute gives you the parameters. For example, the residential piece you asked about, that's a twenty thousand dollar, up to twenty, that's what the law says. The, the, the new, the new commercial, multifamily, and industrial, the staged, you know, one, one hundred, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, that's under the state law. So the tech, the, the governing body chose to adopt them, they didn't have to, but that was a policy decision made by the governing body.
So if it's already adopted, what do we vote on? Just to town, to do it townwide?
Correct.
Correct, all right.
And if we don't want the townwide, how would we word that? I mean, I don't think we're ready tonight to leave this area or that area.
I, the, the way I would, the way, and I'll defer to Mr. Vito, but the way I would phrase that is that, is basically what you're saying, that, that the council should consider designating only certain areas in your, as an area in need of rehabilitation, because the town, the, the board does not feel it's appropriate for a broad brush stroke, some, something along that, you know, which would implicate, or, or, or which would involve all properties throughout the township, but rather look at different, different areas of the township, residential areas, you know, maybe Main Street areas, or, you know, I don't, Main Street, meaning Main Street, small M, or Main Street, you know, if there are properties along Main Street, you feel, the board feels are more appropriate, that where you would want to grant an abatement, to incentivize development, that's, that's a, would be the way I would phrase the response.
And just to be clear, the, the council could do whatever they want, they don't have to follow our recommendations, correct?
Correct.
But, Mr. Conti, I, I don't know about you, but I feel more comfortable having the council, you know, telling them we feel certain areas, not just the whole town.
I, I tend to agree. I'm a little leery of doing anything with such a broad stroke. It may bring things on that you don't want, and then you can't leave, as they say. You know, you, when, when we create zoning laws that are so aggressive, it doesn't give us the ability to say no when you want to say no. And, and, and for the people that are pushing, and I agree, I agree, we need to develop the town, but there's going to come a point where you're going to want to say no, and you can't say no, because you've written it into law, and you're writing this into law the same way. And it's, you know, fifteen-year sunset, how do you undo that? You're stuck with it for fifteen years? Broad brush? Again, where's the studies on the feasibility of what we're making or what we're losing? There's none. I mean, as a taxpayer, that's not my role as a planning board member, but certainly I live in town and my taxes go up and I'd like to see them stabilized. I don't see any proof that this is going to bring any more development than we already have. We have a lot of development coming into town. It's really not going to help the homeowners much because it only goes up to 20,000. So all it does is help the developers and we may bring more developers in at a rate that we're going to be sorry for in the end. I I personally don't like it for, I like it on a basis by basis. If you have a developer who needs it, we we've yet to deny anybody, but to do a broad brush, you're going to be stuck with it. So I'm in favor of sending it back to the council, the recommendation that they take it on a basis by basis. And you could do something for the homeowners, I'm all for that.
Hey, Dean?
Yes.
Another question, if I may, through the chair. So based on them questions, what other towns have pulled back, if you will, like like, you know, not the broad stroke? Would you have that answer, number one?
Generally, and you know, I don't want to put Mary Mary in on the spot. Mary Ann can add some input because Mary Ann was the planner in Jersey City for many, many years. And Jersey City still has their, Mr. Graziano, I'll answer a question, but I think I don't I think I don't know of any towns which do it on a on a kind of area, area by area basis. I can do a little bit more research. I know they exist. I don't know at the moment which towns they are. But generally, I think the policy of this the statute is to is to is to is to look at the infrastructure of towns, look at the housing stock of towns and and kind of deal with them. I mean, the statute specifically says that if the if the considerations warranted, you know, the finding of an area need of rehabilitation may extend in townwide. But Mary Ann, Mary Ann is the has been was the planner, as you guys know, for Jersey City for many years, and I'm putting her on the spot because she hasn't really been involved in these discussions. But Jersey City is a town that has has seen, I'll say, the benefits, depending on I view Jersey City of the the short term tax exemption law.
I could I could address that. And I don't know if I can change your minds, nor do I, I really want to do that, but what I can do is give you a little bit more information on the background of this. One of the things that Jersey City did was exactly this. They did an overall designation. Very few people took advantage of it. And 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 basically, what happened over time is that the council and the governing body decided to change the way they approached tax abatements, and they did less of them because they needed less. And the fact that the designation was in place, all that did was give the city the ability to use that tool. And that's the tool that the state makes available for the reason of encouraging redevelopment and helping the small homeowners and the small developers move forward with a project and make it work. And and it's the jurisdiction of the governing body to make decisions whether to grant those abatements. And it's the decision of the planning board to look at the conditions of the of the community and decide whether it meets that criteria. I think Tom has shown that Belleville does meet this criteria and and it does make sense to if you meet it, to acknowledge that you meet it and make use of all the tools available to the community to make it a better place. And if and and it really is the jurisdiction of the council, they don't have to approve every single one that comes before them. They have the ability to make certain decisions and and on on each application. And there are many people and 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 developers and sites that won't even come forward and take advantage of that. Everyone's financing is different and everyone's situation is different. So all this really is is acknowledging whether or not you meet the criteria. And if you do meet it, my recommendation is you should move forward with it because it really will hamstring your your elected officials on how they can help that community.
Right, so I'm sorry, you're going in now. So again, again, it still has to come back to be voted on to see if we're going to go that way. I mean, we all know where we are with the developments, we all know where we want to go, we all see what's going on. And I know, I can talk on Tommy's behalf, that, you know, once it gets going, you don't want to overflow it either. But I but on the flip side of it, having everybody on the same playing field and also managing it so you don't have to keep coming back 10 times, I like that. So I'm just giving you my two cents.
That's exactly what this is. If 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 the conditions are there that the property qualifies for, there's nothing wrong with acknowledging it qualifies. It's really up to the council, mayor and council to make the decision to go forward with that at the time an application is made.
They still need to make an application to a board. It's not like it just happens. So I I don't I don't really see the difference in that. I just think that it opens doors. So we have some developers that are developing some projects and they didn't develop them under area need of redevelopment. They're going to pay their tax. They're coming in, they're going to pay their full tax. We're going to tell them now, you don't have to give us anything the first year, just give us 20% the second year. They didn't even ask for a break. Now we're giving them a break. Is that what we want to do? And who's not going to take it? And the other question is, what developer is not going to take that break? You said some developers might not even want it. Who wouldn't want it?
Andy, how are you going to give, how are you going to just say you're giving them a break? It has to be approved to give them a break. It's just like.
So if it has to be approved case by case, why change it? Let's all keep it like it is.
If I can just if I can just add one clarification, and it's the way that it's way the ordinance is is written, is that the the and again, it's a policy, the residential property applications for the 20,000, those those are more or less ministerial, those will be approved by Mr. Esposito, and they're they're considered more or less as of right. And it basically says that in in the town's ordinance. The second group of, you know, the improvements to existing, you know, commercial and multifamily structures, also is more or less a ministerial because those are those are things that the town and because it's not a full abatement, meaning that it's only an abatement of the improvements, it's not the abatement of the plan or the structure. When you get into the third category, which obviously which I'm sensing from the board is the most controversial, there is where there's discretion. It requires a resolution, quote approval, of both Mr. Esposito and the council, and it also provides for a financial agreement. So I just want to distinguish, it's very precisely drawn, the homeowners get it as of right. They just submit a one page, the state has a prepared application form, it's more or less a check the box, they have to submit, there's got to be done within 30 days of the CO of the work, and they're going to get that, they're going to get that abatement. That's that's the program for their existing renovations to existing homes 20 years or older, five years, one page application. Second program is more or less the same thing, improvements to existing industrial, industrial, commercial, multifamily. It's it's basically a Mr. Esposito approval as the assessor. The third program, because it's a little, I'll say, more dramatic therein, it requires a resolution of council and a financial agreement. So I think the policy is you want kind of an even hand with these with this with the developments that are are encouraged, you know, the improvements to existing structures and so on, whereas you want a little bit more governance when it involves the more, I'll say, beneficial program for new construction. I just wanted to clarify that. I don't think I was clear on that before.
Can I ask a question? Is this like basically this is just like a courtesy meeting because no matter what, even if we all said no, the council can just override us and said, yeah, we're going forward with this? Am I clear on that?
Correct. It's a recommendation. It's a recommendation, but keeping in mind that the the council is a, you know, is a legislative body that is going to take the board, you know, it's a it's kind of the municipal family, they're going to take into consideration your your recommendations.
And even if we designate it like we want this area, this area, this area, that doesn't matter also, they can just said, no, we're just going forward.
If they don't, they're not obligated to to follow the recommendation.
So as stated, this is just a courtesy meeting, doesn't really matter, right?
It's it's a meeting that's set a different way. It's a meeting that's being done in as required by the statute. The law requires what we're doing tonight.
Yeah, but if they didn't, we wouldn't be having this meeting right now about this, right?
I don't, I don't.
Yes or no?
I don't know the answer. It would be a question that that would be a question for council. If they wanted to get the input of the of the planning board, then they and the law did not require it, I'm not in a position to answer on behalf of the council on what they.
Fair enough. Fair enough, thank you.
Mary Ann, I just had a question. 12 years from now, in the future, Belleville's roaring along, and someone comes up with a, we want to slow down the development, and someone comes along with a plan. How could the council deny the this this package here with the tax abatements without being prejudiced, without the developers suing them, saying, hey, you did it for the guy before me? How does the council have control?
They, I am, I am not an attorney, but I know that they can because they need to approve it, as Dean said. The first two of the of the prongs of of the options are for the little guy, for the small homeowner, someone making a improvements to their property. And the third one and beyond is for for a larger development. And that has to be, there's no, you're not automatically entitled to any kind of abatement. That has to be approved by the mayor and council, applied for, and there's a lot of criteria that have to be met, and they don't have to grant it. So so all this, all all this step is is step one, to say whether or not it it can go forward, but it's up to the council whether or not it does. So and that's what Jersey City did, they put the brakes on. Once they had enough development on the waterfront, they stopped granting waterfront abatements to developments in on and near the waterfront and started focusing abatements in the inner inner portions of the city where there wasn't a lot of investment. And they steered the investment towards those portions. But they did initially allow it everywhere. Not only is it the entire city in an area need of redevelopment, half of the city is in an area in need of rehabilitation, excuse me, redevelopment, it's the other way around. Entire city is in an area in need of rehabilitation and 50% of the area from the Turnpike East is in need of redevelopment, and they're entitled to the full 30 year payments. And they still put the brakes on, they even put the brakes on those, even though they were all, some of them were all individually designated, like like some of the other projects we recently did on on Washington and what was some of the, what was the last study that we did?
Newport?
Newport. Newport is is in is in need of, yeah, in in need of redevelopment. And 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 they have, Jersey City has stopped abatements. Newport's actually was the first developer that elected to not even request abatements because a lot of times with abatements, the council has the the option to add in many conditions. And sometimes the developers don't want to comply with those conditions and they don't go along, they don't request an abatement. So this isn't a guarantee by by going by acknowledging that the the community needs rehabilitation. It's not a guarantee, you're giving away taxes, that's not, that's not the way it works. And and it's 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 really, all this is, is establishing and allowing your governing body to use this tool, which actually has proven to be very valuable in many other places. And it hasn't hamstrung anyone. They've been able to stop it as soon as they've wanted to.
Just a little unclear, like two years from now to council, I mean, if the whole town is designated an area need of rehabilitation, how could you say, no, we don't want your project?
You could, I can do.
No. Oh, go ahead.
You could, sorry, Mary, excuse me, Mary Ann, you could, the council, if they feel, again, not a planning board action, but the council felt there was over development, they could amend the short term tax exemption ordinance. It's a law which is within the the purview of the council to amend. So if if all of the fears of the planning board or some of the members of the planning board they're expressing tonight were to come true and the council agreed, they could amend, they could amend the program. I just wanted to add one other thing, and I'm not a financial analyst, but the to incentivize new construction, while in the first five years you have, you know, 120, 40, 60, 80, I think it's worth, it's worth mentioning that in the sixth year, there's 100% full taxation. And now you have an assessment on a a brand new structure, which would potentially not otherwise have been built in year six of a, I'll say, a much higher value than a property that was either vacant or underutilized. So, Mr. Conti, I don't know.
Just to say, being a former Newark resident, I don't remember what timeframe it was, probably 2000s, they were given five year tax abatements and they were given 1% loans. And then when the loans came due and the abatements ran out, the properties went empty. So that that's one of my fears too. I mean, yeah, it's it's cheap on the front end. What happens when the tax kicks in? Will they be able to afford it? Who knows? I mean, that's what that's what we still already happen in our economy. And you make it too easy to develop, and if you make it too easy to own a home, we've already learned, I'm I'm 58 years old, I've been through enough cycles to see housing markets crash on that. All right, you may have 20 projects going on in this town and think everything is great. And one day you wake up and the the stock market crashes, Brian's bank calls your loan and you got a mess on your hands. I grew up in Long Branch, New Jersey, where a skeleton stood on the ocean for 25 years because they'd never finished the development. So it's not all peaches and cream. You make it too easy, you're going to invite problems. That's my, that's my opinion. I could be wrong, but that's that's what we're here for, to give our opinions.
So if I may, chairman, if with everything being said, I mean, we have a lot on the plate today. I know this has been a lot of conversation and we got five other things. I say just bring it up for a vote.
Okay, Mr. Conti, how would?
Before the vote?
Yes, yes, before the vote, we're going to swear on our members, right?
Okay, yes.
Yes, absolutely. But, Mr. Conti, I don't know how you want to proceed. Do you want to just recommend we promote it, but that we don't feel it should be throughout the whole town, it should just be certain areas that the council could decide? You got to unmute yourself, Andy.
Nobody's ever told me that before. Yeah, I would be more comfortable, but I'm just one vote, that's just my opinion.
All right, let's swear in our members, Rose.
Okay, so we have, we'll start with Mr. Graziano. So if you just want to repeat after me, just make sure you're not muted.
Okay.
Okay. So you, I, Thomas Graziano.
I, Thomas Graziano.
Of course, if you don't mind, just raise your right hand. I, Thomas Graziano.
I, Thomas Graziano.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the same.
The same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
The United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I, Thomas Graziano.
I, Thomas Graziano.
Who further solemnly swear.
Further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The Office of Planning Board.
The Office of the Planning Board.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Agarato?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patricia Agarato.
I, Patricia Agarato.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the same.
Same.
And to the governments established.
The governments established.
In the United States.
United States.
And and this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority. Under the authority of the people.
I, Patricia Agarato.
I, Patricia Agarato.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of the planning board.
Of the planning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd, I'd like to open the, the meeting up to the public for any, uh, public comment before we, uh, come to a conclusion and a vote.
Ray, I have to read something on behalf of Vincent Frant Antoni. He had emailed me. He's not able to zoom into the meeting, but Vincent Frant Antoni, one twenty-nine Mount Prospect, Belleville, New Jersey. I object to having the entire town declared an area in need of rehabilitation. When this issue hit the news stream, I received eight calls from residents concerned about the negative effect this declaration would have on our home values. I believe a better way would be to defer on any additional assessments on major improvements for a period of three years. This would be done on that individual property only and would not impact the rest of the town. On a side note, I am happy that the council recognizes that our high taxes are a burden on most taxpayers.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that has a, a comment or a question they'd, uh, like to make at this time?
Yes, Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street.
Go ahead.
Uh, I just would like to applaud both you, Mr. Venero and Mr. Conti, uh, for, um, your concerns, the misgivings and suspicions you have about the third aspect of this, um, rehabilitation agreement. When this was presented to us by the council at last month's meeting, it was praised, it was sung to us as a program just to help existing homeowners in Belleville. And as Mr. Conti pointed out, with the twenty thousand dollar threshold, which has now been put on the record, this will allow essentially almost minimal work to take place. As he, I think he said, this might not even pay for a new roof and a driveway. What, what this program is really intended to do, in my opinion, you're, you're throwing a few breadcrumbs at the residents of Belleville to make this thing palatable, but it's really just a modified redevelopment plan masquerading as a rehabilitation plan to give developers another windfall. They're paying no taxes in the first year, only twenty percent in the second year, forty percent in the, the following year, et cetera. So that means over the five-year period, if you just average it out, they're only gonna pay half, half the tax rate they would otherwise. It's another just big concession to the development class and to hell with the existing homeowners in this township. So I want to again thank you, Mr. Venero and Mr. Conti, for, um, seeing through this. By the way, Mr. Conti mentioned the, uh, the tax break that, uh, the project on the former Roche property got on Mill Street. You guys may probably remember that during that application process, the developer said that he would widen Mill Street as well. So not only were just the sidewalks patched, not replaced, but it looks like the widening part of that project has been abandoned as well. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Is there anyone else in the public that would have a question or comment?
Hey, Ray, I just want to add that as, as far as that Mill Street, uh, project, uh, the, the widening of Mill Street has not been abandoned. He, he did give us a ten-foot rideaway dedication and at this point, we can't, and he, and he also prepared plans that the county's reviewed. But we can't make any improvements to that, to Mill Street until the county is making improvements to that intersection with federal money. And until that project is complete and signed off by the federal government, no, no improvements to Mill Street can be done.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Thank you for that update.
Is there anyone else in the public? If there's no one else in the public, we will close the, the public portion. And if we would like to, um, make a motion to approve this, uh, recommendation designated town and, uh, area, townwide area in need of rehabilitation. With the third, uh, criteria, I'd like to put the, uh, only certain areas to be deemed an area in need of rehabilitation be determined by the, uh, council. Would someone else like to, uh, second that?
I'll second it.
Please roll the roll.
Chairman Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guaman.
Yes.
Ms. Agarato.
Yes.
Mr. Zan Gary.
Yes.
Mr. Gaians. Mr. Gaians, do you, do you hear me?
Yes, sorry, I was muted.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donatella. Michelle, uh, are you okay? Do you need a break or you want to proceed with the next?
Um, could we take five minutes?
Sure. We're gonna take a three, five-minute, uh, break.
I apologize for my lateness. I was having technical difficulties with the new computer.
I hear you. No problem. It's all new to us. So just a five-minute break, everybody. We'll, Michelle, a quick break and we'll be back.
Thanks. Hi, Vic.
Hi, Michelle.
How are you?
Good, good.
Stayin' healthy?
Yeah.
Good. Good to see you.
It's like one of Jerry's five-minute breaks.
It's never five minutes. I didn't have time to get my tea before because I was too busy trying to get my new computer online.
Oh, I bet I'm mute. We'll come back.
Okay.
You know.
Is everyone back?
I think we're good.
Good. So, uh, under new business, we also have, uh, PB two thousand four. Uh, the plan, the planning board is to review resolution and preliminary investigation report uh, prepared by CME for six thirty, there, six, 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 Washington Avenue. Uh, planning board to submit recommendations to mayor and council whether this property should be deemed a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
Okay. I think this, this one is me.
Yes.
Um, and I, I, I'd like to start out, um, by asking, um, to just put, if, Corinne, if you can just put on the record the, the notice for this that was completed.
You want me to read it?
Um, no, we'll at least say, um, that the notice, that if you could, if you, if you did the notice that you did it in, in conformance with the statute. And, um, identify that was, it was, it's on file.
I did do it in conformance with the statute. It is on file. I notified the property owners. So I believe that I did it correctly and Dean did help, so I think that's right.
As part of the record.
Yes.
So for this type of, um, project, um, the statute requires that a notice of the hearing appears in the newspaper twice. Once at least ten days before this meeting and then another time one week prior to that. Um, and notice to all the property owners as well. And, um, an announcement is in the clerk's office and on the website. And a copy of the report is also available for the public. And it was that made available to the public as well?
Yes, it has been.
Okay. So, um, I, what, what, what this is, is a report on whether or not the site at block nine, one, zero, one, lot nine, ten, and also known as six thirty to six, 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 Washington Avenue meets the statutory criteria for being designated an area in need of redevelopment uh, for non-condemnation. The standards are the same, whether it's for condemnation or non-condemnation. The notice is different. And so one, what, what, what's involved here is a detailed analysis of tax records, of site conditions, and history of the site, environmental constraints, other constraints associated with the site to determine whether or not the conditions of the state statute are met. There are, um, several, um, several conditions. And based on, based on the report, which is very detailed, the study area meets easily criteria A, B, C, D, E, and H to be designated in need of redevelopment. Now, what, um, what I can do, what I'd like to do, if it's possible here, is like, if, um, can I share, get a shared screen?
Yes, you can. Go on.
So if I, do I click that to, to share the screen?
Yes.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um. Okay.
We see your screen, so you should be good.
Do that. Okay. So the, the report contains a boundary map, which is also a requirement. And it also contains a distinctive features map, which identifies some of the constraints associated with the property. The property is approximately three acres in size. It is, um, tiered in, uh, topographically, it's thick and drops below the roadway. Uh, so that even the building on lot nine is, is below the road and you really can't see into the windows and you can't get to the door without going downstairs. So it doesn't really function as a commercial facility. And then the rest of the site was a former industrial facility that has some contamination, uh, issues, has a rail line boundary bounding, um, the side, the rear and, um, this steep drop along the front. I'm gonna go through some photos of the site. This is the, the building on lot nine. This is the front edge of the site along Washington Avenue. And I have, I have a, a set of photos at the end here that is probably easier for you to see as the appendix. But I think the photos go a long way in identifying the conditions, which visually clearly show that certain criteria is met and it shows how that criteria is met. So along, along Washington Street right now, Washington Avenue, excuse me, a very long stretch of vacant land, which is, is basically a hole in the avenue. Um, and that has a blighting influence on the avenue. Um, and the fact that nothing has happened here for over ten years is also another characteristic that the criteria is, is, is met. Now, the report outlines in detail, point by point, um, how these are met. And, um, I, given the time and, and how much discussion we've had already and the fact that this document, detailed document was on file and available, um, for the public, what I, what I think I'd like to do is, um, see if there are any questions. And, and make sure that the, the board understands and anybody in the, in the, in the, in the community. who's, who's tapped into this meeting understands that this is not anything to do with redevelopment of the site. This report is a statutory requirement that identifies details of whether or not the property meets the criteria to be designated in need of redevelopment. And the board is asked to recommend to the council whether or not they believe the criteria is met. I, I think it clearly is, and, and we put forth in writing this documentation to support that. You can also see some damage to the thing and, and, and the, the barriers to access to the building. This is some of the tiered sections in the, in the, the current fencing around the property. Some of the debris that's accumulating on the property. And then in contrast, this property, the report also outlines what's across the street and down the road and, and, and how, how well those properties are being utilized. And, and how much of a gaffe this property is for that neighborhood. So I, what I'd like to do is see if there's any questions on the report or any questions on what you're being asked to vote on tonight.
I think I have it pretty clear. Marion, if you would just, could you read the, the letters that the, you said like AC, these are the things that apply to it. Could you just read them?
Read, read the, read the criteria?
Right. What's the ones that apply to this project?
Um, okay. There's several for each. Okay, so it is A, B, C, D, E, and H.
Right. And what are, could you just briefly go over what A, B?
So B is the discontinuance of the use of the building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, or shopping malls or plaza, office parks, or manufacturing, or industrial purposes. The abandonment of such buildings or buildings of, with significant vacancies or buildings of at least two consecutive years or the same being allowed to fall into such great disrepair as to be untenable. That is criteria B. That is met by the existing building on lot nine. Criteria A is the generality of the buildings are substandard and unsafe, unsanitary, or dilapidated, or obsolete in design or as a characteristic that make them conducive to unwholesome or living or working conditions. So the placement of this building, the fact that it is at least 10 feet below the street level is another feature that meets that criteria. Criteria D is that the buildings or improvements, which because of dilapidation or obsolescence, faulty arrangement or design. Just might as well read it. Lack of ventilation, light facilities, excessive light coverage, or deleterious use, or obsolete layout of any combination of these or factors that determine and make it unsafe or untenable. So in this case, it's an obsolete layout, another criteria of that. There's also steep steps that necessary to reach this, which is also an unsafe feature. Criteria H is that it is suitable for redevelopment. Criteria H is easily met because obviously that's the case. It's, it's, it's crazy that this site is still vacant. It is in a great location. I mean, the fact that it hasn't been redeveloped is because of the usual characteristics. Lot 10, lot 10 meets criteria C, which is a criteria that deals with vacant land. The land has been vacant for over 10 years. It had the opportunity to be developed. There was site plan approvals that were made on the lot. And that approval also extended into lot nine as well. They could have been developed separately, and they still haven't been developed. So those, those are the, the main criteria. E is, is a little not, is not on target, but it does meet E as well. A lack of property, very poor condition of title, diverse ownership of real properties. There are other similar circumstances that impede land assemblage. In this case, they are the same owner, but because of the, the, the limitation of the rail line along the rear property line and the fact that the access to the land is, is, is below the street, it, it makes it more difficult to get to the property and to build anything on it because the buildable portion of the land is so far below the street level. So those are the criteria. In order to be designated in need of redevelopment, you only have to meet one of them. This study area meets almost all of them. And I, I don't think there's any question that it, it can be designated in need of redevelopment, but it's not my decision to make. It's a recommendation of the planning board, and I just put together the report. Based on the photographs, site visits, and other documentation, we also looked at inspections and, and reports and, and actually responses, fire responses and police responses to the sites over the years that we obtained from, from the construction office. It showed that there had been several incidents on the site as well because of the vacancies. And in, in, in total, and it's all combined and compiled in the report, in total, the criteria is easily met. And I would recommend that you designate it in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation.
Well, thank you for clear, you know, clearing, clearing it up and letting everyone know what the criteria were and that they are being met.
Yep.
Does any board members have questions, Marion? Anybody unclear about what we're trying to do here? No board members have questions. Anybody in the public have a question or comment?
I do. Mr. Venero, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Just for Ms. Bucci Carter. The criteria that you cited, allowing this property to be declared in a proper, an area in need of redevelopment. You cited A, which says the generality of buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or obsolescent, or possess any of such characteristics, or, or are so lacking in light air or space as to be conducive to unwholesome living or working conditions. I understand that much, but isn't it true that there are no buildings on this site at present? The site has been, has been cleared. So you're, you're, you're referencing a statute, which in my opinion, doesn't even pertain to this property because there are no buildings on it. They, they're all gone. So how can you, how can you say that buildings are not, are not appropriate when there are no buildings there at the moment?
There's one building.
I, I understand what you're saying. The, 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 the site that I'm talking about with the building on it is lot nine and, and, and not lot 10. Lot 10 is the three-acre vacant lot where the warehouse was torn down. Lot nine still had the building on the site, and I'll show it to you. Lot nine is, it has, has, sorry about that. Has this building on the site. So the criteria has to be applied to each property separately. So when we went through all the criteria for lot nine, it met A, B, D, and H. And when we went through the criteria for lot 10, it meant C, E, and H. So that's why, that's why the one, the, the discussion of the building is for lot nine. The discussion of the vacant land is for lot 10.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. But just for the record, it is true that this property needs to be declared an area in redevelopment before a pilot can be granted to it. Isn't that correct?
That is one of the criteria. That is one of the criteria. But a pilot has nothing to do with this study, and it has nothing to do with the charact, looking at the characteristics of the site. And, and it really should not be talked about by the planning board because it's not an issue here. The issue and the only thing before the board is the study and whether or not the study adequately identifies the, the compliance with the criteria.
Understood. But it, but it is technically correct that the council itself cannot award a pilot or long-term tax exemption to this development unless it has designation as an area in redevelopment. So it need, it needs this, this, this designation before the council can then subsequently grant Mr. Restnity a, either a pilot or a long-term tax exemption. This is a necessary condition before the council can take that action. Is that correct?
You could look at it that way, but what this really is, is a, a, a step to, in order to allow the city council and the planning board and the community through public hearings to adopt redevelopment standards that would bring this property back into development consistent with the properties around it and make something special happen there. It allows, it allows designation in need of redevelopment allows the community special powers to adopt more restrictive zoning that could make things better as far as zoning and development goes. All the other criteria are other criterias and advantages and tools that go along with that. And as you mentioned, the pilot is one of them. But that is, that's not something that goes before the planning board, and it's not something that's part of this discussion.
But just so that we're all clear, both the experts and the public, that this property, this project could not get a pilot unless it is first designated as an area of redevelopment.
Yes, we're aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. But I know you're, I, I just also want to point out that when this board, when the planning board heard the application two years ago, I asked during the testimony if, if the applicant would be seeking a pilot at any point. And the test, I, I don't have it at my fingertips, but I do recall the applicant saying that they weren't seeking a pilot at that time. So obviously now that time has come. I also, I just want to also make one comment about what's going on at this moment. It's my understanding, and I think Mr. One of the Restnities, Mr. Restnity is part of this Zoom conference tonight. It's my understanding that before the planning board approved the 135 mixed-use development for this property, Mr. Restnity wanted to put a warehouse to accommodate the motorcycle mall. But the, the council strategically changed the zoning last year, making this part of the new BG zone, which precludes warehousing anywhere now along Washington Avenue. But just as a matter of record, last week, the zoning board heard a case for a warehouse on Little Street in the BG zone. Yet granted, it was a pre-existing non-conforming use, but the zoning board approved 7-0, a warehouse in the BG zone. So now there's a precedent. So I just want Mr. Restnity to be aware of the fact that while he may be told that you can't put warehousing in the BG zone along Washington Avenue, there is now an approval in place along Little Street with the former Belleville Wirecloth Company, which is now going to be used as warehousing. So it's just something to keep in mind in case he should still be interested in putting a warehouse on this property instead of a mixed-use residential facility.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have a question or comment?
I do have to read something, another comment from Vincent Frantantoni, 129 Mount Prospect. This area 630 666 Washington Avenue should not be deemed a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. When the applicant was approved for this project, he stated that he was not seeking a tax abatement. With the current COVID crisis, we certainly should not be giving tax abatements or pilots to any developer. The schools are currently dealing with a major problem deciding how and if they can safely open our schools. Pilot slash tax abatements do not provide any revenue to schools. In these unprecedented times, when our people are out of work, trying to put food on the table, pay their taxes, it is definitely not the time to give tax relief to wealthy developers.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that has a question or comment? If not, we'll close the public portion. And if someone would like to make a
A motion?
A motion, sorry. A motion to recommend to the mayor and council that this property, 630 there 666 Washington Avenue, should be deemed a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
I will make a motion.
I'll say.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Bove? He said yes. Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Ms. Guaman?
Yes.
Ms. Nogorato?
Yes.
Mr. Zangary?
Yes.
And Mr. Gaians?
Yes.
Thank you. Applications before the board. In an effort to try to get everybody heard tonight, I don't know if we're going to make it, but we would take PB 2009, 527 at 535 Union Avenue, lot 6503, lot 23. We're going to take that application first. That's John Stephanelli, seeking preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a three-story mixed-use building with 300 on the first floor and 20 dwelling units above.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The council's name is Robert Castillon. Do you want me to open on this matter, or do you have some preliminary procedure you have to follow?
No, go ahead. You can proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as I said, my name is Robert Castillon, the firm is Castillon-Pomaco, 524 Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant in this matter, John Stephanelli, the owner of 527 535 Union Ave. This is an application requesting preliminary and final major site plan approval and bulk variance relief. If approved, my client will demolish an old, single-story masonry building and construct a three-story mixed-use building on the property. There will be retail space, lobby space, and a utility area on the first floor of the structure. The second and third floors will be 20 residential dwelling units. The plans reflect two affordable units, but they are not required in the VA zone and are no longer part of the application. The bulk variances are a lack of loading space. And if they are considered variances, the elevator bulkhead being 52 feet above ground, that being two feet above the height requirement. And the percentage of commercial space being more than 25% of the first floor, being more than 25% of the first floor building area, but less than 25% of the ground floor if you consider parking. The witnesses you'll hear from are John Stephanelli, the owner applicant, Guy Lagamercino, the engineer, and Raul Cabado, the architect. Also available, if necessary, is Mike Adovic, the builder, and Martin Marino, Mr. Cabado's architectural assistant. If there's no other issues, I will call my first witness. I'd like to call John Stephanelli.
Mr. Stephanelli, would you please raise your right hand? And I don't see, Mr. Stephanelli, can you hear me? I see you now, and you're on mute. So can you unmute yourself?
I just unmuted him. I think we should be good.
Perfect. Okay. Mr. Stephanelli, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? He's still muted.
On my end, I do have him unmuted. Let me just, um.
John? You might have yourself muted, John.
See if you can take yourself off mute.
Michael, are you with John? Mr. Chairman, if you want me to switch to go with my engineer while Mr. Stephanelli tried?
That'll be fine.
I can do that.
Yes, please proceed.
Guy?
Yeah.
Okay. You'll have to be sworn in. Michelle, would you swear, Guy Lagomarsino?
Yes, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Guy Lagomarsino, L-A-G-O-M-A-R-S-I-O.
I'm sorry, you, I'm sorry, you cut out a little bit there. Can you spell that again for me?
It's L-A-G-O-M-A-R-S-I-N-O.
I'm not sure if I missed.
You're breaking up, Guy.
You're breaking up a little bit. Was it L-A-O-F-A-R?
L-A-G.
L-A-G-F-A-R-S-I-N-O?
Yeah, L-A-G-O, as in Mary, A-R-S-I-N-O.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Guy, would you tell us your occupation and where your office is located?
Okay, my occupation is, I am a licensed engineer. I am licensed in the United States and in Union City.
Excuse me, you're breaking up like every other word I'm getting.
Michelle, Tommy Graziano, if the gentleman speaking would talk slower, it will come out clearer.
Sometimes that happens if you're speaking quickly, yes.
Guy, you gotta try to talk more slowly and enunciate, and hopefully it'll come through.
Okay, so I am a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed for about 30 years.
I lost you again for about.
I've been licensed in New Jersey about 24 years. I've been an engineer for almost.
Guy, it's not working. You're going to have to go as slow as possible because the slower you go, the better chance we'll pick it up. Try again.
Okay, so we're going to try, so so I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey, and for about 24 years, I've licensed. My office is in Union City, New Jersey. And in before boards throughout New Jersey and New York, as well as been sworn, I've been before this board in Belleville, but a lot of times, mostly in Hudson County.
Well, accept your remarks as next word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Guy, would you tell us or just review the location of the property?
Location is Union Ave. Gas station slash, I mean.
This is not working, Guy.
Excuse me, Guy, if you have a landline, you are able to call in and you could just do the audio through there. It won't be glitchy, if that's an option, you could do that as well.
I can get that call back in. I'm going to see if I can get on the internet via my phone. I will try to check back and then try to Stefan, maybe one another reviewer.
I think Mr. Stephanelli is available, if you guys just want to confirm.
John, are you available now? John? John Stephanelli or Mike Otavick? Are you guys available?
Let me just unmute both.
You need to unmute the screen that says left.
John Stephanelli, can you hear us or speak?
I'm not, John Stephanelli, you need to unmute the screen that says left.
Corinne, I'm sorry, we're not doing well here.
No, it's okay.
He's back.
All right, you got me now? Can you hear me now?
We got you.
Okay, I'm with you.
All right, John? Give your full name, and you have to be sworn in as a witness.
Okay. My name is John Stephanelli.
Doug, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
John, what is your home address?
My home address is 83 Carmar Avenue, Belleville, New Jersey.
You can take your hand, okay. And what is your occupation?
I am a owner slash auto repairman.
And is your repair shop located at 527 535 Union Avenue in Belleville?
Yes, sir.
And how was that property used when you acquired it?
It was a gas station slash repair, and I acquired it as just a general repair shop.
And how long have you been there?
Almost 30 years.
At the time of your purchase, did you wait until the tanks were removed prior to your acquisition?
Yes, everything was removed and deemed clean before I took the property.
So the tanks were out, the approval was obtained, and then you closed on the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in reviewing to prepare for this presentation, did you see Mr. Haritz's letter asking that a new sidewalk and apron be put in should this application be approved?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree to do that should the application be approved?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of Mr. Stephanelli.
Okay, does any board member have a question of him? If not, you can proceed, Mr. Gassion.
Okay, let's try to see if Mr. Lagomarsino is.
Can the public ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Sheldon.
Sorry to interrupt. I just, before we get fully enmeshed in the details of this case, I just want to point out one thing. This proposed project is essentially right across the street from the Whiskey Priest's Bar slash Grill that the zoning board approved about a year and a half ago. And during that testimony, and I believe Mr. Gassion mentioned Mr. Otavick. He was one of the partners for the Whiskey Priest's project. But during that case, which was heard by the zoning board, there was, one of the conditions attached was that the Whiskey Priest's facility was going to be allowed to use the parking area provided by JNS Auto so that restaurant operations wouldn't have a deleterious impact on the residents in the neighborhood. But now that this, this project, if approved, apparently is going to do away with JNS Auto and replace it with an apartment building, is that going to cause an issue for the Whiskey Priest and the existing condition that was attached to the approval of that application?
I represented the Whiskey Priest at that time. Mr. Otavick has been made very clearly aware of that issue, and that ball rests in his lap should this application be approved. He will have to do something with regard to that condition if it still exists. I don't recall the exact details, but I pointed it out to Mr. Otavick, and he knows about it. Right now, this is an application for this site. And obviously, that lease would be terminated should this site be approved and Mr. Stephanelli decide to go forward with the construction. As everybody knows, there are many applications that are approved, and it takes a long time before they ever go forward with any construction. So Mr. Otavick's aware of it. I made him aware of it as soon as the case got started. And he will do whatever has to be done with regard to revising his approval, should that be necessary.
Will Mr. Otavick be speaking to this point later tonight? Mr. Gassion, will Mr. Otavick? Mr. Otavick write in testimony about the parking situation?
I'm sorry, there's bad connection.
Will Mr. Otavick be speaking about the parking situation?
Mr. Sheldon, I.
Getting a, something back.
unmute yourself.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes, I'm back.
I think it's you that is making that noise.
Let me, let me go on.
Could you mute yourself, Mr. Sheldon? Mr. Gassion, I don't know if you want to just restate what you said, that that issue about the parking would be addressed by the.
There is a condition in the approval for the Whiskey Priest having to do. Maybe it's me.
I, excuse me, whoever's on iPhone too, it just says, he's popping up speaking, so I think it's coming, might be, there you go, he muted. Let's see if that helps.
If everyone who is not speaking unmute, will mute themselves, that will help, and then hopefully we can narrow it down.
Okay, so what I said was, Mr. Otavick was made aware at the time this application was commenced that there was a condition within his approval, and should this application be approved, and should the property be used to commence construction, he would have to take the necessary action before the Board of Adjustment or whatever was necessary based on that resolution. I did not study that resolution, but Mr. Otavick is aware that it creates a potential problem. What I further said was, there are many times when approvals are obtained, or it takes years before anybody does anything with those approvals. This application has to stand on its own, having nothing to do with Mr. Otavick's situation. The Whiskey Priest would have to do what they have to do to find alternative parking, should that be required under that resolution of approval.
Thank you for clearing that up. Anybody else in the public have a question of this first witness? If not, Mr. Gassion, proceed.
All right, let's see if Mr. Guy Lagomarsino is available at this time. Guy? Sorry about the problem with all my witnesses. Guy?
I do have Guy here. He just has to unmute, so.
Guy, you need to unmute yourself. Guy? Mr. Chairman, again, I'll try an alternative. Let's try my architect, Raul Cabato, and hopefully we can come back to Guy Lagomarsino, the engineer.
Okay.
Raul?
Yes.
Okay. This is Raul Cabato. Ms. Quick, would you please swear him in?
Mr. Cabato, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Again, please state your name and spell your last name.
Raul Cabato, C-A-B-A-T-O.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabato, would you state your occupation and where your office is located?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect. My office is in 35 Journal Square, Jersey City, New Jersey.
And from what school did you graduate and what degree did you obtain?
I graduated with a Bachelor of Architecture degree from Temple University. I graduated in 1989.
And I know you said you're licensed. I'm going to ask that question again. You're a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I've been licensed since 1999.
And are you a member of any societies or professional groups connected with your work?
Yes, I am. I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects.
Have you testified previously before zoning boards and planning boards? And in fact, did you testify previously before this board?
I have testified before this board. I've also testified in various boards in Jersey, in New Jersey, including Jersey City, Bayonne, Edgewater.
I think that's sufficient. Chairman, I submit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As an expert, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabato, would you describe the existing building on the site?
Okay, it's a, it's a one-story brick building, I mean, masonry building, and I think we plan to demolish it.
And would you generally, and you say you're going to demolish it, that would be if this approval is granted, is that correct?
That is correct.
Would you generally describe the proposed new structure? Generally describe.
Okay. It's a, it's a new three-story, 26,900 square foot structure. It shall have retail unit on the ground floor, as well as parking for 21 cars. On the second through third floors, there shall be 20 apartments with a mix of bedroom counts. The ground floor shall be parking for 21 cars, as well as the lobby, utility rooms for the building, and a retail establishment.
Corinne, can you share the screen or can you show the rendering with regard to this?
I could, I could do that.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you. Mr. Cabato, can you describe the exterior of the building using the rendering to assist you?
Okay, what, this is the main elevation facing Union Avenue. What we are proposing are a brick facade primarily in the front with some terracotta finishes for the Oriole windows. We have glass storefront material for the garage and the lobby and the the retail space. We also have decorative garage door, metal and glass.
Can you, I know you've discussed it, but can you in a little further detail describe the makeup of the first floor of the structure?
Sure, let me, let me bring you to the floor plan. The ground floor shall consist of 21 parking spaces, with the typical parking space having a minimum dimensions of nine feet by nine, nine feet by 19 feet. Also proposed is the building's lobby, which will be located right here, as well as ancillary utility spaces on this side, and the retail space, which is about 880 square feet right here.
And that's front side, Union Avenue, correct?
That is correct.
Anything further with regard to the first floor?
No, not really.
Okay, can you just generally describe the second and third floors of the structure with regard to the type of units you have on those floors?
Sure, the second and third floors shall consist of 10 apartments on each floor with six studio apartments right here, having an average size of 555 square feet. There are two one-bedroom apartments.
I'm sorry, average size apartment, how many square feet?
For the studio apartments, it's 555 square feet.
Right, it sounded like it was 50 square feet, 550 square feet, that's fine.
The one-bedroom apartments, there's two of them, one on each side, their average is 812 square feet. And then on the ends, there are one, there are two, two-bedroom apartments, and their average size is 916 square feet.
And you indicated there were two affordable units, and those no longer are part of this application, is that correct?
That is correct. I would just like to clarify that the affordable housing requirement is not required. That is correct. I would just like to clarify that the affordable housing requirement is not required for B-A zoning district, and should be disregarded. We inadvertently included this provision, but upon further review realized it was applicable only to the B-G commercial mixed-use zone.
Would you review the ADA accessibility?
Sure. Okay, the following have been addressed to comply with the handicap accessibility requirements. As stated earlier, the sidewalk shall be reconstructed and shall have a maximum slope of 1 is to 20. At the garage, there shall be parking space provided for handicap occupants, in accordance with the building code. The entry lobby, the entry lobby shall be at the same level as the sidewalk. Handicap accessible road shall be provided throughout the building, from the entry to the building, to the elevator, and from the entry to the building to elevator, and then eventually to the apartments themselves.
Anything further with regard to the ADA accessibility, or use thereof, by a disabled person?
I just want to make clear that the apartments are adaptable, as required by code, and if handicap people occupy the unit, then it can, it could be easily become accessible.
Can you review the proposed security measures to be taken, should this application be approved?
Sure. We propose to monitor all the common spaces, both exterior and interior, with security cameras. There shall also be a virtual doorman system. The garage door shall be opened via a remote wireless system. As a safety feature, we propose to install a red light warning system, whereby, with an audio component, whereby people are warned whenever the garage door is being opened.
And where will the security cameras be located? Could you repeat that?
The security cameras will be located in common areas, in the garage, upstairs on the roof, in the, in the back of the building, any, any common area, we would have a security camera.
And the application reflects there is no loading space. Can you explain what will be done with regard to deliveries, in light of the fact there is no loading space?
Okay, we propose to utilize the, the street in front of the premises for loading and unloading purposes. Provisions would be made in advance to secure these spaces for deliveries. Please note that we anticipate minimal frequency of deliveries for the commercial space. If necessary, loading and unloading may occur in the garage.
And can you please discuss the amenities that are planned for this building?
Sure. I would just like to point out, the amenities were tied into the number of units that were proposed. We have the calculations right here. Calculations for amenity spaces per Section 23-7.8G. There shall be, so these are the calculations right here. The amenities themselves, the size of the amenities, like I said, was based on the number of units. A 200-square-foot fitness center is required. The, the size was, the required size was 200 square feet. We are proposing a 397.44-square-foot fitness center. Also, a club room is proposed, 200 square feet is required. We are proposing 162 square, wait.
Anything else, any rooftop amenity, or anything like that?
There is a rooftop amenity. There is a roof terrace, which is 1,333.47 square feet, and a roof lounge. That's 620 square feet. I would like to show this was the proposed roof setup. This would be the club area, with lounge seating, and tables and chairs and a barbecue area, and this would be the open area, the open terrace. And here's some more images.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but should this be entered into evidence?
Hasn't that been provided to you as part of the record?
Previous to the meeting, I just wanted to make sure that they were presented on the plans that the members received.
So it definitely should be entered, whatever way, I thought it was part of the record, having been sent in.
Rose, what's your?
We can, we can enter it as an exhibit. Want to do an A1?
Yep.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you, Rose.
Maybe the rendering, the exterior rendering, A1, and this will be A2?
Yes, I, I got that, okay.
Okay. Now, I call your attention, Mr. Cabato, to the letter of Tom Haritz, the consulting engineer. And contained within that letter is a statement at D with regard to the elevator bulkhead. Can you explain what that involves, that two feet?
So, basically, the, the actual building itself, the roof, the roof of the building is at 38, 38 feet 2 inches, so that would be this point right here, which is the top of the roof of the building. Above that, there would be the elevator bulkhead right over here, which is 14 feet. Part of the reason why we're raising that is, we have a roof, roof deck on top of the, you know, on the, on the roof, and we're accounting for some structure for that roof deck. So the elevator would have to go an additional foot more, so that we could have handicap access to the roof deck, and I think that pretty much accounts for why we're raising the, the height of the bulkhead. We're over by about two feet.
And that allows the, the amenity on the roof and handicap access to that amenity, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and the last point within Mr. Haritz's letter, I believe the building area has, on the first floor, has more than 25% of the ground floor utilized for retail, is that correct?
If this were the ground floor, yes, more than 25% would be used for retail.
And if you were to consider the entire first floor area, if you consider the parking, then you do not have that, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you need that area for the parking spaces in order to accommodate one space per unit, is that accurate?
That's correct. The parking spaces and the maneuvering clearances, that's required to move out of the parking.
And if the board were to consider that a variance, that would be a C variance, and we would seek that if the board thinks that should be a variance, the same with the two feet for the 52 feet for the bulkhead?
Yes.
Any further comments with regard to Mr. Haritz's report?
No, I think we've touched on all of them, at least related to what I'm doing.
I have no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
I just had a quick question. Does it show the plan where the trash is going to be collected?
Yes, sir, thank you for bringing that up, that's a good question. Now, so there's an area designated for trash storage for each, for each floor, that would be in this area right here. So the, the plan is that the owners will hire a building super, and during designated days, they will collect the refuse and bring it down and to the garage level, and it will be collected by a private hauling company.
Where's it going to be collected from? Where's like, each tenant going to put their garbage?
I'm sorry. It would be in this room right here, right here, for both floors. Each floor has a trash room.
But where, how will it be picked up, I think is the chairman's question.
I'm sorry, so on the, on the days that's designated for pickup, the superintendent will bring them down, and it will be called by a private company.
So it will be the responsibility of the superintendent to bring the garbage down to where it will be picked up by a private scavenger, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the garbage, I guess, is going to be stored inside the building until the collection day?
That is correct.
We're not really keen on holding trash inside the buildings.
Yeah, we are, we just went through this.
Yeah, we're not really keen on holding the trash inside the buildings. You can't designate an area somewhere outside where you can get a dumpster or something?
Mr. Cabato, could you explain? Mr. Cabato, could you explain exactly what you have as a collection area within the building, for the board's benefit, to see if they are satisfied with that? Give them a little detail about that, please.
Well, once again, it's, 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 it's a room that's going to be, that's going to have its own ventilation, and it's going to be pretty much sealed, and, and the trash will be placed here by the individual occupants, right? And then, on the designated days that it will be picked up, then the, the super will take the trash out and bring it downstairs for... In other words, it's not going to be stored in a common area outside of the building, it's, it's just going to be...
Yeah, last month, we had an application on Washington Avenue where they stored the garbage inside, and we just didn't know on like, these 100-degree days with trash sitting there two or three days inside the building, if that's such a great idea.
Is there, Mr. Cabato, is there air conditioning, is there a filter system? What will be within this room?
There will be air conditioning, there will be its own ventilated, ventilation system.
We're applying, if we apply the same standard, we, we insisted that they put a storage container outside.
And that doesn't even address like, the retail area that's downstairs? Where are they going to put their trash? I don't see anything for the retail downstairs on the ground floor.
Mr. Cabato, obviously, the board's interested in the exterior area on the ground floor. Is there an area that you can find where the garbage can be located outside of the building, in the parking, somewhere in the parking area?
Sure, I, I think there's this area over here that we could put a container, right? That could be the holding area, and it would have, you know, we could, we could either bring it in this way for the, for the dumpster to pick it up. It would be outdoors, we could, we could fence it in, it would be a container, probably a 30-yarder.
And can you explain to the board how you would fence that in, what kind of fencing would it have?
I would use a board-on-board fence. Or, I mean, we, we could also... Let me just show you the...
It's just that we had an application, and we didn't think it was a good idea to store the garbage inside the building. First floor would be much better, better ventilation, hot summer days, doesn't stick out the building. I know you're saying air conditioning, ventilation, but...
So this area, the area I was pointing out would be this area right around here. We could just basically extend this, this fenced, this masonry area out, out to this edge, and have the container in here.
That sounds like a much better plan to me.
Okay, so we will then amend the application to show the garbage area with a board-on-board fence around it, at the location as indicated by the architect.
Okay, I'm sorry though, is this being picked up by the city, or is this private, a private hauler?
Private scavenger, private scavenger.
You also have a question, as far as pickup is concerned, how will the truck pick this up? It's close to the street.
I'm sorry.
So, can this be brought out to the street by the superintendent, or will it have to be picked up by a garbage truck?
I would imagine that, I, I believe that they would have a designated area inside possibly the garage, where they could just roll the container, or, I mean, I don't know, you know, just roll the containers to where the garbage truck is?
I, I feel that that's something you guys could work on with the trash hauler. As long as we have an area outside that's not inside the building, I'm fine with that. I don't know how the other members are, but I just think that's a better plan.
Mr. Cabato, are we able to make an arrangement with the hauler to pick it up?
Sure, yes.
Some out, some way, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add, I don't think you need the board-on-board fence, I think, I think Mr. Cabato stated that he would extend the masonry fence that he, the brick fence, or brick wall that he has in the back, I think it's more decorative, and I think all he needs to do is raise it six feet high in that area, instead of four feet high.
Mr. Cabato, is that satisfactory? And can that be done?
It's, it's, it's absolutely doable, yes.
And just to clarify, this trash will be picked up as many times as it needs to, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question on the rendering, you have storefront glass at the garage door, and also the window at the garage, so you'll be able to see through into the garage?
Are you talking about?
Yeah, on the rendering on the front, front view, Bellevue Avenue. Will that all be see-through glass into the garage?
Right now, we have it as clear glass, and, and I believe, well, that's one of the requirements for the, for the storefront, actually for the front facade, that we have some glass.
Is there a way to tint it, so as to maybe not view the inside of the garage?
If the board would allow us, we would do it.
I'm going to agree, Mr. Conti, I think it's a good idea to tint the glass.
We have no objection to tinting it. The requirement for glass comes from the amenity requirement, and that's why there's so much glass on the front.
The glass is nice, but I don't know that we want to see into that garage.
Agreed.
We have no objection to tinting it. If you make it a condition that gives us the authority to do it, we have no problem.
There you go.
That would be great, thank you.
Proceed.
A question I have, how would tinted glass work with security?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that question.
How well would tinted glass work with security purpose, as far as size, security purpose? Have cameras there, how?
I'm sorry, Patty, I, I can't hear you very well.
I think what she was saying was, her concern is security, tinted glass, people will not be able to look in. But, Mr. Gashion, if you just want to say, I mean, there's going to be...
Well, I don't think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr.
I believe you're going to have security cameras in the garage for security.
We are, in every open location, there will be security cameras, every open location.
Patty, you're good with that? Glass will be tinted, but there'll be security cameras viewing what's going on inside.
Well, because the retail section, I think there should be something that is open. But that's fine.
Very good. Good, proceed, Mr. Gashion.
Is any other questions for Mr. Cabato?
Anybody else in the board have a question? If not, well, in the public, does anybody in the public have a question of this witness?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr.
Michael Sheldon, 47, Flight Street. First of all, I want to thank the members of the board for noting the, the problem with the trash pickup. As was correctly pointed out last month, when you heard the case for 450 Washington Avenue, that applicant wanted to store their garbage inside. This planning board correctly said no. In fact, you may remember, Mr. DiLorenzo was asked about the permissibility of storing trash inside, and he said it was against the town ordinances, health ordinances, to store any trash inside the building. So this board forced the applicant to give up one of those parking spots to have proper dumpsters present, which then leads me to consideration of this project. The applicant said that, the engineer, the architect said... The applicant said that, the engineer, the architect said that he would extend the masonry wall in the back. But looking at the parking diagram, doesn't this mean that parking spot 17 is going to have to be sacrificed in order to give access to the dumpster? You're, you're going to have, thank you for calling up the diagram, in order to, if you're, you're talking about a 30 cubic yard dumpster, you're going to need either a vehicle to get into that area or to wheel that out. How is, how, how is parking spot number 17 going to be compromised by now having a dumpster in that back corner area? Do you need to give up parking spot 17 now?
No. Um, let, let me just go through this. What we, what I would, what I would suggest we do is we shift the parking down to the left and open this area up, extend this wall to make it masonry and have the container in here. You will notice that some of the spaces I have are nine foot six. I'm only required to provide nine feet. So I could just start shifting them over six inches, one foot here and then another foot here. So I could shift all these parking two feet to the left, which would give me more room over here for a container. I would have to do some research as to the size of the container. Of course, we will be in consultants with the, with the hauling, the hauling company, but there are containers that can be moved. We just have to, we have, we just have to specify that.
Well, you only have seven parking spots there. If you shift each one six inches, that's only going to give you three, an extra three and a half feet of space.
And I already have five foot four here.
Hey, Mr. Sheldon, I think that's something that they could work out with the trash hauler. You know, there's the ones with the four wheels that they can roll out. I'm sure it's something they can come to an agreement with.
As usual, I'm just concerned about the, the, the amount of parking being provided. If you look at the occupancy list, uh, which Mr. Cabado showed a little while ago, you've got 12 studio apartments, four one bedroom, two, or four two bedrooms. The total number of occupants for this building is listed as 48. Now, I'm assuming of the two-bedroom apartments, there are four of them with a total of 16 occupants. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm going to assume that you're expecting roughly half of those occupants in the two-bedroom units to be children?
It would be an assumption on my part, yes.
All right. Well, it's safe to assume that roughly half of those 16 occupants would be children, which means in all likelihood, eight children, at least eight children from this building being added to the Belleville School District. And the reason I, I always point this up, I know you're, you, this, I'm a regular at the planning board meetings. I happen to be a trustee for the Belleville Board of Ed. But as I always have to say, I'm not here representing the Board of Education. I'm here as a private concern citizen. But nevertheless, I have to be cognizant of the impact any structures like this will have on the future of our school system. So you're, you're looking at probably safely.
They're not, they're not saying that they're going to have eight children in the building. They meet the parking requirements, so there's no variance for parking, so.
And wish, based on my experience as an attorney doing land use for many years, you do not get that many children in this kind of a building. How the number comes up at eight, I don't know, but that's unlikely. And in addition, if unlikely, and in addition, if there were some children, they'd probably be moving. Once they grew up a little bit, you might have some babies in there, but usually people don't stay that long in an apartment of this nature when they have children. And the, and the, every study I've ever seen reflects that. And further, as the chairman pointed out, we comply with the parking. We have the correct number of parking. And with regard to the dumpster area, again, it can be worked out because fortunately, there's an extra six inches on a lot of those parking spaces. Given my clients and flexibility with regard to the width, there will be allowed for the dumpster.
Well, Mr. Gashion, you just said something that reaffirms what I've been arguing all along. You said that in your experience, group of families with children don't stay in apartments like, or complexes like this very long. So that means, as I've said many times, projects like this are essentially encouraging a temporary transient population rather than having, having structures which...
That's absolutely not correct. Fifty percent of the couples don't have children today. Fifty percent of the couples don't have children. Absolutely incorrect that it's encouraging transient population.
All right, let me give you the benefit of the doubt that there won't be any children here.
You made your point, Mr. Sheldon.
Oh, let me, all right, let me just finish. You've got, assuming that there are no children in this, or very, or just one or two children. You've got an anticipated 48 occupants. So if you assume no children, that means 48 adults.
He meets the parking requirement.
Yeah, the, the, the new parking requirements, which as you all will realize, those 48 occupants will probably generate at least 40, 40 vehicles. You only have 21 inside, plus you're now losing the parking that was going to be provided for the whiskey priest. You're just dumping more vehicles on an already heavily congested part of Belleville. You have to be cognizant of this, what your, what, what your approval is going to do. It's just another, another drop in the bucket, you'll say, but it's all these projects in their totality, which is going to transform Belleville from a township into a city. And that's what Team Mellem ultimately wants to do. They want to turn Belleville into a whole.
Mr., that's out of line.
It's not out of line.
I object to that kind of testimony.
You made your point, Mr. Sheldon. We're going to move on. Anybody else in the public have a question to this witness? Not Mr. Gashion, go ahead, proceed to your next witness.
Mr. Lagomarsino. Guy?
I believe he's on. I do see him here with phone, well, audio only. Let me just request.
Guy, you need to unmute yourself.
I, I, I'm on dialing. Hello?
Okay, Guy, we have you. Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, can you hear me okay, Guy?
Yeah, I hear you good. Okay, so.
Give your full name so that you can be sworn in as a witness.
Again, all right, Guy Lagomarsino, L-A-G-O-M-A-R-S-I-N-O.
Michelle, you want to swear him in? I know we tried before, but there was some difficulty.
Yeah, so do you want to swear me in again? I thought it was okay before, but it's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, please raise your right hand, sir, and I can hear you right now, so thank you.
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Guy, we're going to repeat some of the things before because it's difficult to hear you. So tell us what you maintain your practice and how long you're practicing in the field of engineering.
I've been practicing as an engineer for 30 years, almost. I think this January will be 30 years. And I've been on my own, on my own practice for the last 15 years. And I'm licensed in 10 states and I do, I do go before planning boards throughout New Jersey as well as New York. And I've not been before Belleville, but most of my time is in Hudson County where I stand before boards, like Jersey City, for example.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Okay.
Mr. Lagomarsino, would you please review the location of the property?
The location is in Belleville off of Union Avenue and it's a large-sized lot of 125 feet by 180 in length.
And would you describe generally the proposed site plan?
The proposed site plan covers the majority of the property as is, and it's, the, the property as it now currently changes grades from the time you enter into the garage area, behind the garage, to the, to the rear of the property. So the topography does change around the site, whereas right now, we're going to remove most of that graded area and make it flat. Nothing, we're not going to build the new building on a slope. We're going to just take all of the soil out. I've calculated around 4,000 cubic yards of soil would be, need to be removed. Uh, and we're going to build a retaining wall around the perimeter, majority of the perimeter, and with a setback in the rear. And on the top of the wall, we'll have a fence, of course. And the grade will change from the, the new grade is, inside the building will be about 131 elevation. And the, the top of the fence, the rear fence is 146. So there's a difference of 15 feet between the, that will be removed of soil in the rear portion of the area in order to make the building be fixed equally on Union Avenue.
Mr. Lagomarsino, would you review the existing drainage at the site?
The existing drainage, there is no drainage, so except for the grass area in the back, but once it, the once, and remember, it is on incline, so it's, some of the incline is greater than 15%. So in a heavy rain event, that, all that water just comes running down into the garage and into the asphalted area and onto the street and to, actually, there's a catch basin right at the rear, I'm sorry, north end of the property.
And would you review the proposed drainage plan that would correct that?
Well, the proposed drainage plan, we are going to all follow the RSI standard, as well as the location in the, in the garage and the New Jersey D E P standard for best management control. Uh, we're going to hold two-year storm event and a reduction of 20% for 100. The location that we've selected would be in the area of the entrance and it would be detention pipes of two foot, three foot in diameter, uh, running most of the length with a patrol inlet and a patrol outlet going towards the streets.
And can you review the lighting?
The lighting, the lighting fixture as it is, there's lighting on the street and the, the lighting, the building in the rear, the, in the rear is the only area that's, that would be, with any need outside lighting, but even that in itself, if you have lighting as would be designed inside the garage area, which is the interior of the building, even though it's still, remember, there is no walls in the garage area, uh, that lighting would be enough to extend to the, the rear parking area to be lighted with illumination that you need. As far as the front is concerned, there are two real-toothed space has the overhang as well as the entrance, which will have L D, L D, uh, L D lighting coming down just to that area, pinpointing for the entrances only. Because most of the street is lit, lit accordingly from the lights on the streetlights.
You're talking about the garage area. Would you please review the proposed ingress and egress?
The proposed ingress and egress is more than, uh, sustain, uh, more than adequate enough for cars entering and leaving the premises.
Can you review the size of the driveway, please?
The, the driveway is more than adequate for two cars, it's 16 foot wide. Uh, and it's a reduction from what even what's there now. Remember, right now, there's two entrances in and out and it takes most of the property. So we're reducing that and putting curb and new sidewalk on both sides. And I have certain details in my, the middles that show and highlight how the driveway will, will accommodate the entrance into the property as well as the exit as well. There will be, inside the property, leaving, there will be a stop sign as well as, uh, uh, some, uh, we had just talked about some sound attenuator allowing anyone outside knowing that there's a car leaving the premises.
And the parking, describe the parking if you would, please.
Okay, the parking in itself, uh, there's 21 spaces and all is according to the parking requirements in the state of New Jersey as well as the turning radiuses and, uh, and the width and the depth of the each parking space. I mean, Raul did mention it's nine feet, six inches, we can reduce it, but looking at that corner there, uh, where they want to put the, the, the garage, I mean, the garbage, I believe we could try to work something out and I don't think it's something that we can amend the plan to, to keep the, the width of the parking spaces as is. And as far as the front is concerned, uh, there are two spots there as it is now, uh, but we're closing the north end driveway entrance. So, uh, we have not specified if there's going to be any new spaces there, but obviously there could be new spaces accommodated by the town in that. So we'd be adding spaces. I figured it could be up to three to four spaces new in this new layout to, that we can give into the town.
And have you had an opportunity to review the letter from the consultant, Mr. Harris?
Yes, I have.
And do you have any comments with regard to that letter?
No, the only thing is the ADA accessibility, the grade outside, the, the front, the, the front area is, the grade is not too, is not too steep or inclined. We can maintain the ADA requirements of 2% slope throughout the site as far as entrances in and outside the building and inside the garage.
Now, there are a number of comments in Mr. Harris's letter. Are you able to comply with those comments? For example, comment two in the general comments, can you comply with that? Comment four, uh, and
I, yeah.
I believe that's, and, and comment eight.
Yes, um, 100% we can comply with this, uh, due to the, the current topography, which we're going to be changing to more leveled ground inside, everything will be able to be accommodated. But the retaining wall will be, you know, 15 feet in the rear and in the front, the retaining wall will be down to three feet. So it's going to slope up as it goes back due to the, the change in the topography. Uh, and on top of the retaining wall will be a fence, uh, and, and, so there will be on a property line, the retaining wall.
Okay, I have no further questions to this witness.
Uh, does any other members of the, of our board have any questions for this witness?
Yes, I have a question in regards to your stormwater. I'm not, I'm not seeing anything on the plan that represents how much water you're going to be retaining or how you're going to be retaining waters. The water is going to just be flowing from the leaders and open areas right onto the storm drain?
No, no, that is not the case. Uh, uh, we, we, we definitely, we left that, that area gray over until we wanted to know where we were going with the, the size of the building. So that's why I didn't finalize the, to accommodate for the drainage, but there, there's more ample space as it is now along that, um, uh, the garage floor to put drainage pipes with, to accommodate the footprint of this building and to comply with all.
What type of volume would you be retaining?
Well, I... Yeah, two-year storm, 100% for sure, and 20% reduction for the 100-year storm from what is there right now. Um, so I'm figuring at least 150 linear feet of a three-foot diameter solid pipe. We won't do any, um, seepage tanks here due to the fact that it's in the garage and it could be overrun and over, and overflow at any given time. And it's much better and, and a solid pipe to accommodate for that instead of having any seepage into the ground, which would be questionable.
Andrew, he's going to, the guy's going to have to submit a complete set of engineered plans. They're not fully engineered. So I think if you approve him, I will go over, he needs to complete, uh, submit a complete grading plan, lighting plan, landscaping plan, and a drainage plan that we need to review.
I guess I'm always surprised by, from township to township as I work, how requirements are so different. Because I've run into some, you know, probably larger than needed systems, but I could understand why some townships want to do that. I, I just think we need to be careful that we don't undersize some of the retention systems and wind up with problems as we continue to develop and cover these, basically the lots 100% coverage practically, so that's my concern. But I'm sure that you'll look into that when the plans are submitted.
Mr. Harris certainly will be reviewing everything and we have to comply with the stormwater management requirements that will be enforced, so it will be taken care of before any permit would be issued.
Any other members of the board have a question for this witness? No other member of the board, anybody in the public have a question or comment for this witness?
I do.
Whoever said I do, you want to proceed?
All right, it's Mike Sheldon again, 47 Flight Street. Just a real quick combination question for both the engineer and architect. Since the trash rooms on the first and second floors are being done away, done away with, can they tell us what the, the, the fate of those two rooms will be? Are, are they going to be assimilated into the, the neighboring two-bedroom apartments to make three-bedroom units? Will they be used to create a den? Uh, I, I would like to know for the record, since this board, the planning board is requiring the removal of the trash rooms, what's going to become of that space? is requiring the removal of the trash rooms, what's going to become of that space?
I don't know that the engineer would have a chance, be able to answer that at all. Raul, have you had an opportunity, since this suggestion was made, to discuss the use of that with your client? Raul Cabato?
No, no, I have not.
Mr. Chairman, if you want, I can ask Mr. Cabato to contact the client and try to give you an answer. But at this point, obviously, Mr. Cabato can't make that decision without a client discussion.
Yes, I understand. He only had a few minutes. I mean, the application isn't going to change with the amount of bedrooms or dens. I don't think we're going to increase the size of the units.
Well, we will not increase the size of the units because we've got, if we get an approval, we've got an approval the way it is.
There you go. Okay.
I assume it'll wind up being some sort of an amenity.
Mr. Sheldon, is that any other questions?
Well, as long as it doesn't become a third bedroom, because that would change then the calculation.
Mr. Gashian stated that we're approving...
The parking.
That this plan gets approved, it's based on these plans with these sized units, these sized bedrooms. So the size of the units will not change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the public?
Yes, Ray. Vic Mafucci.
Yes, Vic.
A couple of things. I believe the last person stated that the property is 108 feet deep.
125 by 118, it sounded like? Yeah, yeah.
Because on the tax records, it's only 102 and a half feet deep. So obviously, somebody's wrong.
Usually, the tax records are not necessarily accurate as the square footage. And I would think, Mr. Mafucci, that the survey was accurate and we're basing it on the survey.
Yeah, I assume...
Yeah, I got the survey. The survey was given to me.
I just wanted to bring up the point that the tax assessment office is probably wrong. Okay, the other thing...
Bob, can you submit the survey to the board? You know, for me, Frankie, we always, we always ask for that. Thank you.
If it hasn't already been submitted, we will submit it.
Thank you.
One other thing. I believe you stated the retaining wall will start at three feet high?
No, it will start at three feet and go to 15 feet.
Can someone just hop over the three-foot wall into the parking area?
No, I believe that there will be a fence, a four-foot-high fence, that will be on top of that wall.
There definitely has to be a fence on top of the wall. Or not on top of it, but adjacent to it to protect from anyone doing what was just said. So there will be a fence.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Any other members of the public? No other members of the public have a question or comment? We'll close the public portion. Mr. Gashian, want to proceed?
Just a very brief summation, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members, we're seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and a bulk variance with regard to not having a loading space. The issue raised in Mr. Harris's letter, having to do with the two-foot height, obviously, we've noticed for all other variances. And if the board sees, feels that is necessary, we seek that variance. And with regard to the amount of commercial space, we have more than 25% of the building area with commercial space. We don't have more than 25% of the area, the total area, because we have parking on the first floor. If the board thinks that's a variance, we would ask that that be approved. Obviously, this is a permitted use. The parking complies. We're eliminating an old masonry building. I think the rendering shows that this is a beautiful building. Of course, it's going to be right across the street from me, and obviously, I would appreciate a beautiful building being there. That's not particularly relevant. I understand that we will comply with Mr. Harris's recommendations. And further, we will submit the survey and get that into you within the next week. And as usual, I thank the board for its time and consideration. My apologies for any difficulties that have developed as a result of the Zoom meeting. I would be only too happy if we could end Zoom meetings and start making presentations directly again. Again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gashian. If nobody else has any, or more members have any comments or questions they would have, would someone like to make a motion to approve this application, including the recommendations we made for tinted glass on the garage door, exterior trash, and acceptance of Mr. Harris's report?
Make the motion.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Bov? He just said yes. Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Ms. Waman?
Yes.
Ms. Nogorato?
Yes.
Mr. Zangary?
Yes.
Mr. Gaians?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and attention. I appreciate it. And we'll follow up on the items that be followed up with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe due to the late time, we're going to have to move our next three applications, which is PB 2007, 229 Main Street, PB 2911, 695 701 Mill Street, and PB 2008, 131, 137 Gray Lockevano, for the carriage forward for our next regularly scheduled meeting, Thursday, September 10th. Without any further notice. Rose, is that sufficient?
Yes, I'm just going to further state, you know, for the record, that anyone who is on tonight's meeting, in anticipation of those applications, it is on record that there's no other notice necessary and that it will be heard at the next meeting date. Which is, which is...
It's going to be September... 10th.
September 10th at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yeah.
Bye, guys. Good night.
Bye, guys.